Ways and Means Committee Meeting, I'm going to call that meeting to order. Today is Monday, October 20th, 2025, and it's approximately 5:15 PM. Tonight, we have four, four different budget adjustments in front of us. They're on the agenda, Agenda Items number three, four, five, and six. The first one is a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to reallocate funds within the Police Department. This budget adjustment total is $633,000. It is coming from salaries and it is going to capital purchase. This is, budget adjustment is needed to outfit some of those police vehicles that we've ordered and also to purchase tasers for our newly hired officers.
Mr. Chair, I move we send this budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send this budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. That motion is approved. Next, budget adjustment is a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to reallocate funds within the Maintenance Department. This total budget adjustment is $8,000. This is coming from different line items within the Maintenance Department and it is going to opportunity house electric expense.
Ms. Chair, I move we send this budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send this budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is approved. Next, budget adjustment is a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to account for grant funds received from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. This total budget, total budget adjustment is $500,000. This is from grant revenues and it is going to various line items within community development, salaries, contractual expenses, retirement. So basically salaries and, and other expenses associated with that grant.
Ms. Chair, I move we send this bud, budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send this budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is approved. Next, the last one we have is a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to account for grant funds received from the Arkansas Minority Health Commission. The total budget adjustment is $4,505, and this is coming from grant revenues and is going to purchase equipment and supplies, advertising, consulting expense, and miscellaneous expenses.
Ms. Chair, I move we send this budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send this resolution to the full council with a due pass. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion is approved. Okay. Do we have any other business for Ways and Means?
No, but Chair.
All right, here none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Ways and Means is adjourned.
Ordinances and resolutions, we have one ordinance. It's up for the first reading, am I correct? Okay, up for the first reading. We have, that gives us seven, seven agenda items, two, three, four, five, six, and seven are all resolutions and they would be completed on tonight. That, that concludes ordinances and resolutions. Any questions?
Yeah, we need to discuss number seven, four, a little bit more. We'll do it during the, uh.
We'll do it.
Go ahead.
We'll do, uh.
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Number seven is a lot of paperwork and it's, we'll, we'll discuss it later.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
So move.
It's just a more formality. Having to, you know, deal with.
They gotta have their contract. You know, I mean, we have to, yeah, we have to have a contract with, uh, because they have our money.
Budget adjustment with vehicles. I mean, with, with six. I think it's vehicles. I don't know.
I just think in the past, you just, they haven't attached that to it.
How you doing, Mayor?
I'm fine, how are you?
Doing good.
Hey, hey.
You shook off homecoming?
Almost. Quite. I ain't even posted yet.
Recording stop.
I'm gonna do anything.
I call you. I got two passports and I'm down for one. You're going to use it.
I got you. I got two passports and I'm down for one. You're going to use it. You're a little guy. Nah, I can't do you, I gotta get your stuff off my head. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. I'm so bad. I'm not ready to do that. I want everybody, it's not coming easy to export stuff. You know, it's not. It's not.
Good evening, everybody. It is now 5:30, so we will, without having any public.
Reporting in progress.
As we have no one signed up to, for public comments on agenda items, we will now call the meeting to order. And begin with invocation, and this evening, we have Bishop Shirley Sanders of Greater Deliverance Ministry with us to lead us in prayer and the invocation. Will you all please stand?
I want to thank you guys before I start praying, inviting me over. It's always good to have Faith Bates Community to come in and to pray and to pray over our city and to pray over the individuals and the different councilmen's. So Father God, I thank you and I bless you today as we come before this council today. We ask you, God, that even preparing for this meeting, that everything will be done decently and in order. I pray for every councilman that's represented here today. We come against every attack that's come against our city. We come against everything that was caused business to not flourish in our city. We take authority over it right now, in the mighty name of Jesus. We eradicate every spirit of violence in every community, north, south, east, and west. We eradicate these violent acts in our city. Father, we just thank you for our youth, our schools that's in this city, God. We pray for Pine Bluff High, Dollar Way. We pray for Whitehall District, oh, God, Jack Roby, God, that area. We continue to pray, God, that this fentanyl that's on the rise, that's causing our children to overdose, Father, that we pay attention to our schools and what's going on on the streets, even this domestic violence walk that's going to begin on tomorrow. Help us to get embedded, help us to get educated about the conditions of our city. We continue to pray over our mayor, God. We continue to pray over those that are making decisions for this city and that no weapon formed against our city shall prosper. We thank you, we praise, we pull down every stronghold, we come against every attack that no enemy can come against in Jesus' name. You say, no weapon formed against us shall prosper. And I eradicate every spirit and every spirit that tried to come against Pine Bluff. It will not work. We command you and we bid you not to come here, in the mighty name of Jesus. So we pray the blessings over our city, that nothing can happen and come against our city with us coming together in unity. You say, where there is strength, there is unity. And we thank you for the unity of our people coming together in this city. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Sanders. I'm gonna start using that, I'm gonna pray for eradication. Okay, and next, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by La Maximus Dockett of Pine Bluff Junior High.
My name is La Maximus Dockett, or Max Dockett. I go to Pine Bluff Junior High, I'm in seventh grade, and, yeah, please proceed and pledge allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the beautiful liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Okay, and next, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mace.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lockett.
Here.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Brunson.
Here.
Councilmember Denton.
Here.
Councilmember Fells.
Here.
Keith Brunson. Thank you, everyone that's present. Councilmembers, you have your copy of the minutes from October 6th. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the minutes of October 6th. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those voting yes to approve the minutes from October 6th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now, we will go into hearing our committee reports. And for Ways and Means, Councilmember Brown, will you please deliver your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. Tonight, we had four items up for discussion, Agenda Items number three, four, five, and six, and all of those items were approved to go to the full council with a due pass. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver your report on ordinances and resolutions?
Yes, Mayor, we have seven agenda items. Number one is, is the ordinance up for the first reading. Number two, three, four, five, and six, and seven are all resolutions and will be, and will be completed on tonight. That concludes ordinances and resolutions.
And does that conclude your report?
Yes, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holcomb. And next, we have Economic and Community Development. Councilmember Frazier, will you please deliver your report?
Thank you, Mayor. On October 14th, at 11:00 AM, we had our Economic and Community Development Committee meeting. We discussed the resolution that is on the docket for today for the council to authorize a contract with Chris Warrior in regards to interior demolition of a property. Economic and Community Development will rehab and make available for low-income families to purchase. A resolution for budget amendments to add the 500K Brownsville Grant funding. And then, we also discussed the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a roofing contract for, with the Sierra Group for the roofing on the union property. Economic and Community Development and the mayor are close to finalizing a selection for the Economic and Community Development specialists so that we can work on the micro enterprise assistance funds for the 2026 budget. The micro enterprises are small businesses with five or fewer employees in which the owner is considered, is considered low income. And then, Mr. Matthew went over to City Projects to give us an update on those projects. The Main Street project is 75% to 80% complete, waiting to, waiting for Entergy to finish boring for streetlights and landscaping. And then, the Grant Street project is moving along with progress being made on 13th Street after some utility issues. There were some utility issues, but that's being worked out. It is currently 20 to 30% complete. The Barracuda Street Plaza project is 100% complete and seating equipment for the area will be next. DRB Blues and Wellness Plaza had a soft opening just before homecoming and a formal opening will be coming soon. Also, please remember that we're still doing the Trolley Thursdays in order to support our businesses downtown, so please consider riding the trolley and visiting some of the businesses and activities that's going to be going on within our city. I want to remind everybody that this Friday, we have our movie in the library. It's free, totally free. Everybody can attend, you just have to RSVP so we can make sure that we have food and, and all the goodies that we give out for you. The movie that we're showing is Facing the Giants, and we look forward to seeing you on Friday. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Frazier. Next, we have our Public Health and Welfare. Councilmember Denton, will you please deliver your report?
Okay, Mayor, we missed our scheduled meeting on 10/2, but we did communicate through email on 10/16. Transit will be celebrating their 50th anniversary on Thursday, October 30th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on the Civic Center step at the front, and there will be food, fun, and festivities. And also, from the Pine Bluff Cemetery Department, they've had six burials for September 2025, six spaces pre-arranged, and several monuments were removed and repaired during the, during this reporting period, and they are anxious, waiting to call up Brigham to hold the cremated remains, and they are the only one in the southeast Arkansas with this feature. And that is my report.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Denton. Next, we have Public Works. Councilmember Lockett, will you please deliver your report?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the Public Works Committee has not met since our last meeting, but we shall meet on the 28th at 1 o'clock in, which chamber is Madam City Clerk?
I don't know yet, but I'll let you know when it ends.
Okay. So we, we, I think they're still doing some work in the old City Council Chamber, so we should have an announcement from our city clerk. Now, we're gonna, I'm trying, Madam City Clerk, I'm gonna call you tomorrow, I'm trying to round up the Events Center Task Force and the Tiny House Task Force to be referred to the Planning Commission to get them done with. So I'm looking to do 1 and 2 o'clock on Wednesday. So I'll call you again in the morning on that, but, Brother Fells, I know you've been inquiring about those, and quite a few people have, and both of them are at ordinance. I just need one approval from the group and push it on to the Planning Commission, and those two task force will be concluded. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lockett. We, next, we have Development and Planning. Councilmember Fells, will you please deliver your report?
Yes, ma'am. So our next committee meeting is tentatively planned for November the 7th at 4 o'clock PM, beginning with the committee members to confirm that, and then we'll make a formal announcement, and that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Fells. Next, we have Traffic and Aviation. Councilmember Brunson, will you please deliver your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Traffic and Aviation, we plan to meet this Thursday. I need to get with the clerk on the exact time. I have got with Larry Reynolds, and I know there's some signs that have been requested by him, so we're gonna try to meet this Thursday so we can get all of that information over to Resolve and to our Street Department and to the council and whoever else needs to get the approvals on those, so we can get that completed. And that completes my report.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Brunson.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Administration Committee. Councilmember Holcomb, will you please deliver your report?
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee met twice last week and met Tuesday, October the 14th. They met on an ordinance amending Section 2-181 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting limitations of service on board and commission and for related purposes. This ordinance was pulled by the sponsor. We also met last Thursday, October the 16th, for an appeal hearing for Lorraine Hatcher from the City's Attorney's Office. And from, from that appeal hearing, the Administration Committee voted to uphold the termination of Lorraine Hatcher from the City Attorney's Office. And that brings us to this, to this point, to the council, that the council has to vote whether to honor, honor the Administration Committee recommendation.
Okay.
Is that, oh.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you made the motion. Second?
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Okay. It's, it's, your motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those voting for indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. And finally, last but not least, Public Safety. Councilmember Brown, please deliver your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety has not met since our last meeting. We had a meeting scheduled on October 8th, but we did not have a quorum. So right now, unless something happens, our next meeting will be November 5th, and I assume it will probably be here in the new chambers at 1:30 PM, unless we finish the work over.
We might be finished by November 5th, but I think Madam Clerk is notifying members for their meetings based upon the progress and what happens by those dates.
Yes, ma'am. So whatever, whatever location is best, then, that we can have the meeting there. So I'll wait on that. And that concludes my report.
And next, we have the proposed ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Agenda Item number one, an ordinance permitting the Economic and Community Development Department to contract with Christopher Warrior, DBA Warrior Environmental. DBA Warrior Environmental Services for cleaning of homes and residential structures and... Excuse me. Residential structures associated services and related purposes up for the first reading.
1442-107 prohibits city government from doing business with an employee or a member of an employee's family when the individual has an ownership interest in the entity performing the work and will derive profit from the contract. And whereas, Section 1442-407 does permit a contractual relationship if the city council should by ordinance authorize an agreement and prescribe parameters of the business relationship. And whereas, Shirley Warrior is an interim chief of the Police Department, and her husband, Christopher Warrior, is owner and operator of Warrior Environmental Services. And whereas, Warrior Environmental Services desires to perform work for the Economic and Community Development Department pursuant to the city's procurement regulations in the cleaning of homes and residential structures and associated services. And whereas, interim police chief Warrior is not in the chain of command of the Economic and Community Development Department and has no involvement in its procurement process. And whereas, the city council in ordinance number 6697 passed March 15, 2021, permitted Christopher Warrior, doing business as Warrior Environmental Services, to do business with the city's code enforcement department under the conditions specified therein. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that Christopher Warrior, doing business as Warrior Environmental Services, may do business with the Economic and Community Development Department in accordance with the city's procurement regulations for the cleaning of homes and residential structures and associated services. Section 2, that all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section 3, this ordinance not being of a general or permanent nature, it need not be published and shall take effect immediately.
Pleasure on the calendar.
I have one question, too, mister. And so, back in 2021, you did pass this. So, it was just strictly for the code enforcement department. Wouldn't it have just been to do business with the city in general?
No.
No? No? Oh, okay. All right.
Any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Matthews, do you have something you wanted to share with the council?
Yes, I would ask the council to make a approval decision to see if we need to get this project done as soon as we possible. But it's gonna take a while. HUD, the project is on hold. HUD requires us to do this. Council approves, we do it. They take their time. Unless the council has a problem, approve the resolution. See, that's our question. I'm sorry, I shouldn't put it in early.
Okay. Any other... Any further discussions, questions?
I have no problem.
Councilmember Lockett?
Now, we gonna bid it out? I mean...
It's been bidded already, and he happened to be the lowest bidder. And Chief Warrior happens to be chief of police at homebound. So, HUD requires that we get an opinion from the city attorney, and the council approved the resolution of ordinance based on what they've come from. City attorney. We have done this before.
Please say.
When we had circus staffs in, and it took us almost six months to get the approval from HUD. It's the cost of coverage, it's slow. So, we're in that position. I thought I would bring it to your attention.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any more questions? Councilmember Holcomb?
Okay.
You want to suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the rules will be suspended to place this on the agenda for a second reading. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Mayes?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
An ordinance permitting the Economic and Community Development Department to contract with Christopher Warrior, doing business as Warrior Environmental Services for cleaning of homes and residential structures and associated services and related purposes.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, that this ordinance be placed on the agenda for the third and final reading. Any discussion? With no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Mayes?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fells?
Aye.
An ordinance permitting the Economic and Community Development Department to contract with Christopher Warrior, doing business as Warrior Environmental Services for cleaning of homes and residential structures, associated services, and related purposes.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that ordinance number one be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all of those wishing to vote for the adoption of ordinance number one indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Sierra Roofing and Solar for a roof replacement on city-owned structure located at 4500 Union.
Whereas, the Economic and Community Development Department twice advertised for interested vendors to submit bids to replace a standing seam metal roof on city property located at 4500 Union Street. And whereas, the firm of Sierra Roofing and Solar submitted the only bid, which is within budgetary parameters, and the bidder is capable of performing the work. And whereas, the mayor should be authorized to execute the contract with this firm to complete the work. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the mayor is authorized to execute a contract with Sierra Roofing and Solar to replace a standing seam metal roof on the city-owned structure located at 4500 Union Street. Section 2, the terms and conditions of the contract shall be consistent with the city's solicitation and requirements and the firm's submission. Section 3, the consideration to be paid for the firm, paid the firm for the work is $68,613.60, which shall be sourced from community development block grant funds.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that Resolution number 2 be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayes?
Just want to know, is this $68,613.60 the final cost? And it won't go up any?
Mr. Matthews?
Yes, we put it out for a bit, it's out of specification.
It's gone from $2,000 to $2,000, about $3,000.
We plan to replace it with metal roof. We do not anticipate any change orders unless that's amongst the city and more states pull the existing roof off. That is a lot of advice.
Well, you know how a lot of companies come in, and they start pulling off the roofs, and then, it'll be $75,000.
Just so that you know, these are two separate units. So, there are two buildings that price to put in the work. We will keep a close eye, monitor the property.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Lockett?
So, this is gonna be a solar roof?
The company is solar.
Oh, I see. My bad, my bad. No, that's serious talk that I wanted to know.
Any further discussion? Okay. With no further discussion, all those voting for the approval or the adoption of Resolution number 2 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 3, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to reallocate funds within the Police Department.
Whereas, in accordance with ordinance number 6849, an adjustment to the municipal budget must be made by ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas, the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by Resolution number 4849. And whereas, an adjustment to change the budget is needed as described and detailed in the attached budget adjustment for the purpose of reallocating funds within the budget of the Police Department as explained in the request. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget adjustment, having been examined, is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed in the attachment are incorporated herein as if fully set forth, word for word and number for number. Section 2, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by Resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachment. Section 3, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that Resolution number 3 be adopted. Any discussion? With no... Councilmember Lockett?
Madam Mayor, the... I looked at this. Is it any way we could just put the items that's being purchased in the body of the resolution?
Wait, ask that question again?
Is it any way we could put the items being purchased in the body of the resolution? They're in the memo, in the attachment. But it makes for quicker reading if somebody looks up this resolution to see what the budget adjustment was for. You could see it was for 22 Durangos and 10 Tasers.
I mean, I don't see any problem with it. Madam City Attorney, Madam Clerk, Madam City Attorney, do you?
I just think it'd be repetitive. I mean, when you go on the website and you pull up the resolution, you get the attachments when you pull it up. At this point, we would have to retype everything, anybody's request. We'd have to retype that, and that would just be time-consuming for my office.
Council... Madam Clerk?
No, no concerns. It would be simple.
Would... You would be the one to make the amendment to the language?
No, the City Attorney's Office.
The City Attorney's Office in the drafting would have to do it. So, Councilmember Lockett, since this would come up with the actual resolution, this is an attachment associated with it, would you be amenable to leaving it as it is?
Yeah. If everything came up, but in many cases, when you put it in immunity code, you just get the resolution? In many cases, you don't get the attachments?
I think the City Clerk includes that. Anytime I pull it up, I'm able to pull up the attachments.
You will have them... It will be attached?
The attachment is associated according to Madam City Clerk and Madam City Attorney.
Okay. Because the only thing I'm saying, Madam City Attorney, is the reason we're doing budget adjustments by resolution is so one can pull up the resolution and see to what the budget adjustment is for. And that's what I'm saying, that... I looked at this particular resolution, and I mean, it was pretty thorough, but it just didn't state that it was for 22 Durango and 10 Tasers.
I just... I think just hearing from both Madam Clerk, who works directly with sending that information over to the immunity code and pulls it up on a regular basis for people with requests. I was with you when I heard the concern. But in light of the comments and confirmation from both Madam City Attorney and City Clerk, are you fine with it staying as it is? Since it comes up...
Yeah, as long as it'll be all included. You know, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm... You know, I don't know, in terms of other stuff I researched, how well in the past the attachments have been there.
Well, if it doesn't have an attachment, it won't be one with it. But if it is an attachment, it should be with it. Yeah. So, a lot of our resolutions and ordinance don't have attachments. But if we have contracts or whatever we have in our package, then it should be scanned in.
Right, right, right. Right, that's what I'm saying. And many times, when they do have attachments in the resolution, it states that attached herein.
Okay, but when you scroll down, it should be...
Say what?
Yeah.
So, I think we're all in agreement that the attachment comes with it as long as Madam Clerk scans it in. So, I feel like... Are there any other questions or concerns and discussion?
I was just gonna say that in Section 2, it does mention that the changes set out in the attachment. So, it does...
Refer to the attachments in the body.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Mayes?
Yeah, I mean, it should be questioned. I appreciate that. Booze hit... It's about $600,000. I mean, it should be questioned. It's not no chump change, man.
Okay.
I mean, really, it's $633,000. You know, like, it's pennies on the dollar.
I don't think anyone's acting like that at all. We're entertaining the question. It's a part of our process. Everyone's getting to speak. So, you're... I appreciate the questions as well. Do we have any more? Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded with no further discussion. All those who would like to vote for the adoption of Resolution number 3 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number 4, a resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to reallocate funds within the Maintenance Department.
Whereas, in accordance with ordinance number 6849, an adjustment to the municipal budget must be made by ordinance or resolution depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas, the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by Resolution number 4849. And whereas, an adjustment and change to the budget is needed as described and detailed in the attached budget adjustment for the purpose of reallocating funds within the budget for the Maintenance Department as explained in the request. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget adjustment, having been examined, is approved. The particulars thereof as detailed in the attachment are incorporated herein as if fully set forth, word for word and number for number. Section 2, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by Resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachment. Section 3, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that Resolution number 4 be adopted. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Fells?
I don't have any issue with the budget resolution. I did just have a question in terms of... I see we're increasing the electrical expense by $8,000. So, is that just because of just normal things? Or is there something extraordinary that we need to be worried about in terms of the system?
I don't think that it's extraordinary. Think on the... If you look on the email, it's a part of the attachment that came from Director Smith. He indicates, for example, in the first two electrical expenses and in the last one, which is the largest amount, it indicates repair to machinery, which would be one-time expense for sure. But based on what he shared with me, this is not anything extraordinary, just required attention for these expenses.
I have a question.
Councilmember Frazier? Wait, did I answer? Okay, Councilmember Frazier.
And that's why I just want to follow up with him because it is just transferring everything to electric expenses. Is that for the rest of the year, or is that just for...
Oh, no. Not... You mean like Entergy?
This is electrical expenses?
Like repairs, like electrical... Yeah.
Okay.
Not for the electrical utility.
What are the electrical repairs that's taking place over there? I know we're planning to... And I'm not against it. I'm just asking a question. I know we're planning to go 24/7 with Opportunity House. And we have an open house coming up, don't we, or something?
We do.
So, I just wanted to know what was the electrical issues over there? If you know.
I think... I mean, I wouldn't know the specifics. I do know that they were repairs made by maintenance, and that is something that we do in-house with our Maintenance Department. And I'm certain that the work that we're doing in-house and in accordance with the... I think Powers does a lot of the work for us. It is to ensure that this doesn't become a larger problem later.
Okay.
So, I think any of us who have... Make these kind of... Make electrical repairs to our house, which is, of course, in scale, a much smaller expense. But when you look at the size of that building and the fact that it's very old, you're just gonna encounter these kind of expenses. So, it's not significant, but it's necessary, I would say.
Okay.
Any further question? Councilmember Holcomb?
So, the budget adjustment, $8,000. Look at the back page. So, if you add those figures up, it says I need $1,000. I need to transfer $1,000. I need to transfer... "I need to transfer," it's only 6,000.
I think, um, that maybe there was an error in his email, because the actual resolution, uh, item, if you refer back to the, um, justification, and it outlines the account number, and it outlines the description. Um, I think that is the correct one, 'cause it, again, it comes with the, um, specific account numbers. It looks like that there was an error. 'Cause the, the first, the email
Right.
was on October 1st, then later, when this amount was completed, it was on October 20th. My sense is that, um, by this time, the work was actually finished?
Yeah, but anyway, madam mayor, he's gonna have to do another, another email to make the numbers look right? So everything.
Okay, I think, um, if.
I mean, it, it's no way that could justify that. I mean, it's just, it's a, it's a clerical error, but it'll make everything right when both the memo and the invoice, or the budget adjustment add up to the same number?
For sure. Um, if I could ask, um, for, uh, Director Devers, there was no kind of, um, emergency in terms of taking care of this correct. So we can just take care of that in the, if you'll make sure to request that he clarify in a subsequent email, so we can add to this, and we'll just put it on, uh, next meeting's agenda. Thank you so much. So we'll pass this. I, I just said, so we'll pa, we'll pull this, 'cause it'll be, I'd have to pull it, since we're gonna address it in next meeting's agenda. Yes, so we're on the same page.
Number four is being pulled?
Yes.
Item number five. A resolution amending the 2025 municipal budget to account for the grant funds received from the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Whereas, in accordance with ordinance number forty, 6849, an adjustment to the municipal budget must be made by ordinance or resolution, depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas, 2025 municipal budget was adopted by resolution number 4849. And whereas, an adjustment and change to the budget is needed as described and detailed in the attached budget ju, uh, budget adjustment for the purpose of accounting for grant funds received from United States Environmental Protection Agency, as detailed in the request and explained in the award document. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget ju, budget adjustment, having been examined, is approved. The particulars thereof, as detailed in the attachment, are incorporated herein as fully set forth, word for word and number for number. Section two, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachment. Section three, the finance department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that resolution number five be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those who wish to vote for the adoption of resolution number five indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Item number six, a resolution amend, amending the 2025 municipal budget to account for grant funds received from the Arkansas Minority Health Commission.
Whereas, in accordance with ordinance number 6849, an adjustment to the municipal budget must be made by ordinance or resolution, depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas, the 2025 municipal budget was adopted by resolution number 4849. And whereas, and, uh, whereas, an adjustment and change to the budget is needed as described and detailed in the attached budget adjustment for the purpose of accounting for grant funds received from the Arkansas Minority Health Commission, as detailed in the request and explained in the award letter. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, the adjustment to the 2025 municipal budget as requested and explained in the attached budget ju, budget adjustment, having been examined, is approved. The particulars thereof, as detailed in the attachment, are incorporated herein as if fully set forth, word for word and number for number. Section two, that the 2025 municipal budget adopted by resolution number 4849 is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes as set out in the attachment. Section three, the finance department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, that resolution number six be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those who wish to vote for the adoption of resolution number six indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a master services agreement for treasury management with Reliance Bank.
Whereas, Reliance Bank serves a one, serves as one of the local financial institutions handling municipal funds. And whereas, to facilitate the management of city funds by the bank, it is necessary to execute a master services agreement for treasury management with Reliance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached master services agreement for treasury management with Reliance Bank for the purposes and terms therein set forth. The document is incorporated herein by reference as if fully set forth.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that resolution number seven be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes, madam mayor, could you explain to ex, to what extent this instrument works?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, um, and I think I've mentioned it in a previous meeting. This is, as many of you, I think all of you know, that our, um, general fund is held in an account at Reliance Bank. And, um, probably three or four months ago, initially, our collector and finance director were meeting with, um, the officials. And they were, uh, extended information about this technology. What it basically is, is it is a machine that is a reliance deposit machine that would basically allow our collector's office to, um, make the deposit remotely, so that they do not have to send the checks over to the bank. They would, um, and I can, and I, and it would be tantamount to what many of us may already do with our phones. When we are, wanna deposit a check, instead of taking it to the bank, we take a picture of it using the app or using the online service. And then that check and its image on the front and back is received by the bank, and the deposit is made without you having to go. This basically creates, um, a safer way, because once the check is remitted to our collector, they do not have to, um, risk anything happening in terms of the loss of the check. They can simply use the bank's machine, the bank's technology. And I actually went with them to the training. Uh, and then they, once they provide the machine, um, there is further training. But, uh, the bottom line is, uh, it is basically technology and efficiency for us using their equipment. There is no cost for this, and, um, it's really just a win-win. Um, any further specific questions about the machine and how it works? I would refer to our illustrious, uh, collector and director who are here tonight. Council member Mays?
So who went with you to go over this, when they explained it to you? The reason I said that, it's 30, 39 pages in here. I mean, I, I mean, just like speed reading. It's, it's, so what are you saying?
So I attended the training, which had. No, I attended the training with the collector and the finance director. Now, the training, um, is, was me, um, doing my due diligence to see how it works. But I wouldn't be in the collector's office actually taking checks, and I wouldn't be in the collector's office doing the deposits. So I got a chance to see how it worked and ask questions, um, kind of as a, uh, so I could talk to you all tonight and assure you that, uh, I did my due diligence to make sure that it's secure. Most of my questions were, uh, centered around the security of the process and the system. And one of the things that, um, they do require is that we keep all of the checks, the actual checks that are remit, remitted and run through this machine for four years? Right, so they require you to keep it for 90 days. We are required by our own code to keep those checks for four years. So there would always be a paper backup to this process. And, um, and again, it's a, a safer, more streamlined, um, process rather than the deposit slips and handing it off to two or three people before it hits the bank. So, and as far, let me point to this, um, um, council member Mays. You know, you talk about the, how thick the contract is. And if you look at the first several pages, just like in an insurance document or any document with the bank, when you're first opening up an account, you're gonna see a lot of, um, terminology to clarify what, for example, Regulation CC means, what Regulation E means. And since we are talking about, um, you know, electronic deposits, I think what you're seeing is language that the bank would use with any entity, whether it's the city or, um, any business, to make sure that there is a standardization that refers to the law, that refers to FDIC standards, the bank standards, et cetera.
So is there anyone?
I'm sorry, we can't, we can't do it. I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead.
So is there anyone that can interpret 39 pages?
Oh, I don't think we need to interpret it when we read it. That's why you got a copy, I got a copy. Okay, well then we're good.
Well, I didn't read it all.
Well, I think if you read it all, you'll see that it is bank terminology. It's an agreement, just like we enter into any agreement. And, um, and so in order to move us forward toward efficiency, um, and security, we're just asking that I be allowed to enter into the contract. Are there any further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Camp, uh, clerk Roberts?
Does this replace the existing treasury management agreement we have on file currently with Reliance Bank?
This is not a treasurer management agreement, and this is a.
That's what it says here, Helen.
It says, "Master Services Agreement for Treasury Management." I don't, you know what, let me say this. I don't know what the existing one is. This is specific to the agreement that will allow us to make deposits electronically. That's what I'm gonna say. So I don't know what the existing agreement is. And actually, this does not say a resolution replacing any agreements. Council member Lockett? Did I see that you had a question?
No, 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 it, this is only for deposit only, this.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, now that's all I have.
Any further question? Thank you. All of the, with no further discussion, all of those wishing to vote for the adoption of resolution number seven indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay, and now we have moved on to the announcements. Number one, the city of Pine Bluff proudly invites the community to celebrate the re-grand opening of the Opportunity House, a 24-hour residential facility dedicated to providing compassionate care, housing and support services for individuals experiencing homelessness. This will be held on Thursday, October 23rd, uh, at 12 noon. Number two, join us for a free birthday bash this Saturday, October 25th at 2:00 p.m. The Refuge Church, located at 5400 Wyndham, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, 71602. Dunk tank, hot dogs, popcorn, nachos and more. Item number three, the city of Pine Bluff and Cards Waste and Disposal will host a second town hall meeting on October 27th at 5:30 p.m. at Sea Ark, uh, Southeast Arkansas College at Sea Ark in Founder's Hall. Come out to learn more about the city's new waste service provider, as well as meet the Cards team. Item number four, um, the Pine Bluff Police Department is thrilled to invite you and your family to this year's Fall Festival, happening on Friday, October 31st, 2025. Bring the entire family out for a night filled with lots of fun and delicious treats, all at the former Bank of America Building, located at 120 West 5th Avenue in downtown Pine Bluff, Arkansas, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Item number five, YAT-AIDS Arts in Motion will be hosting their Mad Lab Fall Festival on October 31st, 2025, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Chester Heinz Community Center. Come out and enjoy candy, treats, science experiments, games and surprises. For more information, you may contact YAT-AIDS at 501-492-9030. Item number six, the city of Pine Bluff is a proud partner in hosting the inaugural Pine Bluff Regional Veterans Parade on Saturday, November 15th at 10 a.m. Join us as we honor the brave men and women who have served our nation in the military. Please follow official city communication platforms for updates on participating. And item number seven, Domestic Violence Walk will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, from noon to 2:00 p.m. at the Civic Center on the front steps at 200 East 8th Avenue. Recognizing that an act of domestic abuse occurs every minute, we would like you to join us in this walk for awareness. And council member Denton, I think that you mentioned something.
Transit.
Yes, the transit celebration. Um, can you read that again, just real quick?
It is October the 30th, from 11 to 1, in front, at the Civic Center.
That, okay, great. Okay, um, so that's all for announcements. And I will adjourn, and then we will hear, um, our public comments on non-agenda items. Motion, I will, um, indulge a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Without any objection, we're adjourned. And before we hear, uh, from Vivian Wright, who is our project manager for the Tyler Technology Project, and you all should have a handout that looks like this on your table. Uh, Chief Campbell, um, right before we left, there was a woman who called and wanted to speak as, on the non-agenda items. Does she just, uh, oh, oh. Okay, um, can you, she was with the attorney, they said. Can you go check and see if, if you don't mind? If she's still here and let her know that we're, we're ready for her to speak. They, right out here, she's talking to the attorney, they said. Thank you so much. And in the meantime, um, manager Wright, you can start making your way up here. And perhaps, if she doesn't come by the time you get up here, we'll go ahead and hear from you, and then we can hear from her last. Yeah, let's go ahead.
Yes?
Yes, please.
Okay, so you all have this document in front of you? That's good. My name is Vivian Wright, and I am the project manager for the Tyler Technology ERP project. And this is really kind of a city council orientation. Let me, let me say that I have been given approximately 10 minutes to orient. I have actually created this document in hopes that at the end of this, my presentation, you will take some time to read this document, and that way you will know exactly what the project is about and the project status. If you go to the first page, the first page addresses what an ERP software is. It is a software. It's a type of software system used by organizations to manage and integrate core business processes in a single unified system. And so what you see here, if you read the rest of it, it talks about it being a unified system. So ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning. On the next page, what it says is that, what I want you to take from this discussion is that the ERP system is, it basically supports operational efficiency. That's basically what this software is. If you read here on on, it talks about that really what the organization does, you have different departments, and it integrates the software that needs to be used by the different departments. Like, for example, we have purchasing, we have bids, we have invoices. Right now, we're not doing any of those processes in a standard way. And what this software does, across all the different departments, it integrates it and allows folks to be able to do things the exact same way. So it does improve operational efficiency, it reduces manual data entry, it definitely, it definitely improves reporting, and that is most important. If you go to the next page, where we talk about the name of this software that we're deploying is called Munis, and it is created by a company called Tyler Technology, which happens to be our partner. Munis supports operational efficiency by tracking and managing budgets, and not only that, what's most important is that it holds folks accountable when it comes to money, and that's very, very important. It allows even you folks to be able to log on with the right permissions, to get any kind of reporting that you want. Right now, you're not able to do that, but this way, you will be able to do that using this type of software. You probably also know, if you go to the next page, that you all have an ERP system that you're using right now. And the name of that, that, that system is called New World. So then you might ask, then why are we transitioning from New World to Munis, which is Tyler Technology's ERP? You have been using Munis for approximately fifteen years. But you had to, but during Mayor Washington's time here, she made a decision that you needed another ERP system. One of the complaints that I heard was that, one, New World is a cloud-based system. The ERP system Munis is, excuse me, that's the opposite. New World is a server-based system. Munis is a cloud-based system. And if you go ahead and read the different, the differences between the two technologies, if you see business reasons for changing to Munis, there are lots of reasons, and I listed them here, for why we are going from New World to Munis. So keep in mind, it supports operational efficiency, it encourages and it supports transparency, and it is a project, it is a, a software that's used by most municipalities and private sector all over the world. If you go to the next page, I want to talk a minute about the project overview. What are we doing? Now that you understand what an ERP system is, and basically, it is a software that integrates all of, okay, so Councilman Mays?
Yes, what number do you own now?
Page six.
Six, alright.
I got ten minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm gonna go through this.
Go ahead.
Real quick. Page six, project overview. Now that you understand what an ERP system is, I want to spend some time talking about what we're doing, because we actually started this project in April. I want to explain phase one, because there are several phases to this project. If you turn to the next page, you're gonna see a timeline. There are four phases to this project. Phase one is financials. It started April twenty-twenty-five, and go live is June twenty-twenty-six. So this phase takes more than a year. Phase two, human resources management with time and attendance. It began, it will begin, estimated to begin, July twenty-sixth, and it ends, and the go live is targeted June twenty-twenty-seven. Number three, phase three, enterprise asset management. It actually is estimated to start June twenty-twenty-seven, and the go live is March twenty-twenty-eight. Number four, phase four, enterprise permitting and licensing. The start date is March twenty-twenty-eight, and the go live is March twenty-twenty-nine. What I want to say is that these dates were negotiated in twenty-twenty-four with the Washington Administration. There has been a change in financials. From April twenty-twenty-five, it first, the go live was first, April twenty-twenty-six. But because of all of the, I don't say that we have issues, but what we do have is that we don't have many processes. For example, we don't have a purchasing process. We don't have a requisition process. Although we do have an ordinance that gives you a big picture of what's required, it does not give you the details when it's time to actually make that transaction. So we had to come up with some of those, and we spent a lot of time, in the very beginning, identifying the current process, whether we had it or not, and then identifying the future process. Financials is phase one, and if you look at that list of applications in phase one, you'll see, I don't know, it's twelve, fifteen phases, there are fifteen applications. Accounting, which is a chart of accounts and general ledger, accounts payable, bid management, budgeting, cash management, contract management, e-procurement, along with vendor access, project and grant accounting, purchasing, accounts receivable, general billing, and cash sharing. Each one of those applications have to be configured, so it takes quite a bit of time to get this in the way that it should look for the city. If you go to the next page, I want to talk about the implementation methodology, because right now, I just talked about the scope. We have phase one, and you see all the applications that we have to put into place. But what's the, what is the implementation methodology for doing this? So you see, there's a picture on there, and this picture actually came from Tyler Technology. It is kind of the standard way of deploying this type of software. Some companies take years to deploy this type of software. Because we are having all of these different phases, basically, for all phases, this is the implementation methodology. We spend some time with initiating and planning, assessing and defining, and it goes on and on, all the way to go live, which is the close. The top line that you see, where it says initiate and plan, those are the things that Tyler Technology will follow. The one below it, with one, two, three, four, five, six, those are the tasks that we will follow. Then you have the work breakdown structure. And where we are right now, just so you know where we are, we started in April, we are in phase number three, or, or step number three, in phase one financials. And so what you have here is we're spending a lot of time in configuration. We spend a lot of time identifying the current, our, our, our current way of doing business, and then we're gonna spend a lot, and then we've spent a lot of time talking about the future. So that is the way, that is the implementation methodology. It is also important that you understand what the project governance is. What is the project governance relationship? So if you turn to the next page, project governance is the structure that ensures accountability, alignment, and transparency through the ERP journey. It's the framework that helps us make decisions, manage risk, and stay focused on our goals. Without it, even the best technology can lose direction. So in this project, governance is shared leadership. As you see at the very top in that picture, you have the executive sponsor on our side. You have both Pine Bluff, and you have Tyler Technology on the other side. Tyler Leadership, and then there is Pine Bluff Leadership. The executive sponsor for this project is Mayor Flowers. Then we also have a steering committee, and we have the project manager. In addition, for Tyler Leadership, we also have the executive, they have an executive sponsor, I think her name is Cindy. They have an implementation team, which we call implementation consultants, and they're the one that's meeting with us and getting information. And then there's also the project manager, and his name is John Carolyn. From the City of Pine Bluff side, Vivian Wright, and that's me, the project manager, is responsible for defining the vision, priorities, and policies that guide how the system should serve our city. The thought is that we understand our community, our departments, and our operational needs. Vivian Wright's role is to ensure that every configuration, decision, and process changes aligns with Pine Bluff's long-term goal of efficiency, transparency, and service excellence. Then you have the Tyler Technology side. The manager's name is John Carolyn, and he brings deep expertise, proven methodologies, and technical guidance to ensure the system is built right on time and according to best practices. So together, this, this partnership forms a, a governance bridge. So let's look at the team, and that's how we make decisions, with the, with the executive sponsor and the steering committee. If you turn to the next page, you get a picture of who the project teams are, who's the project team, and what are the committees that make up the team. So, effective government means clear communication, and I have four teams. First of all, is the steering committee. And I've talked about the steering committee, but here's their task. Strategic oversight, decision-making, stakeholder representation and alignment, policy and compliance oversight, change management and communication, performance and quality assurance. As you see on that picture, that is a picture of all of the steering committee members. We have Councilman Brown, Madam Clerk Janice Roberts, City Attorney Althea Haddon Scott, we have Director of Finance Gina Devers, Chief Joyce Campbell. That is our steering committee. I meet with the steering committee and report to them once a month. They're the core stakeholders. Now, the core stakeholders on that page, you see, those are the directors of the department. Their job is to design the business, design the business process procedures, conduct and participate in peer reviews, lead change management activities, and then they're overall responsible for getting their department ready, moving from New World to Munis, with the assistance of Vivian Wright, who develops all the change management activities. There's the functional team, and there's eight people on the dysfunctional team. These are our subject matter experts, and these people come from the different departments. They are the ones that are responsible for discussing and identifying the current state, whether it is how we do our, our payroll, how we do our purchasing, how we do our bidding. Those eight people identify current state, and they are very instrumental in concurrent state configuration and how we're going to configure our system. They also are part of peer review. Then we have power users, and I have eight people, but that's not true, that's a typo. I made the typo. There are approximately twenty power users. There's one power user for every department, and their responsibility is to test the configuration, test business process procedures, load the data, support end-user training, support change activities, future state configuration, and they also are part of peer review. What I want to say is that, right now, we're on track. We have conducted our first peer review for the chart of accounts. We'll be working on the general ledger, and we, we plan to be loading the chart of accounts into productivity next week. I know that this was quick, but hopefully, if you take the time to read some of the background stuff that I have in here, that I've taken the time to write, that it will be clear. But if you have any questions, my email address is on the back page, and feel free to email me. I don't think that we have time for to entertain any questions, but if we do, I am happy to answer.
Yes. Just in case, do we have any members, council members with any questions?
I have.
Councilmember Frazier.
So in, in the process of this, with the four different phases, so what we're saying is, when we're dealing with financials, the other, the other phase is human resources, enterprise assessment, enterprise. What operating system will they be using if they're not already in the new one that we're using? Is it gonna be, while we-
Excellent question.
-phase, is it gonna be two different?
Excellent question. When we go live with financials, we will not have gone live with anything else. We will still have New World.
Okay.
So they will be using New World. We will be running dual systems for a while. However, in financials, all of our financial transactions, like, with the exception of payroll, all of our financial transactions, like purchasing, invoicing, bids, all those applications, will be done in Munis. But all the others will continue to be done in-
New World.
-New World, yes. Some of the others will be done in, in New World. But then what we all, it's also important to say, that we're not bringing over all of our financial data. We're gonna be bringing over some of our balances. But in the event there is a need, and that was a strategic decision, any event that we need information, financial information, we own that data. So we're always able to go to New World and look up data that's archived, alright? That's old, but this will give us the information that we need.
Okay.
Are there any other questions that I could answer?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I just want to say too, I know how hard you and our directors and team members have been working, so just, I know they're not all here, but I want to give a shout because this has required members to, I mean, our directors and our leadership to show up while still doing their jobs every day. So shout out to city workers, city leadership. Okay. And I mentioned earlier that there was a resident who- So shout out to city workers, city leadership. Okay, and I mentioned earlier that there was a resident who wanted to come and speak, excuse me, on a non-agenda item. So Ms. Alfreda, or Mrs. Alfreda Martin, thank you so much for your patience tonight.
Mayor and the city council member. I'm currently not a resident, trying to be a resident. I was actually born here, raised, went to school here, left after college. And it's been my desire to return home. And I started the process back in June of this year. I think I've spoken to a couple of people here on the city council. And started the process June 25th of this year, trying to move back and ran into some roadblocks. And so I just want to bring up a couple of things and try to figure out the direction to go, real quickly, don't want to take up a lot of your time. But I just finished a meeting with the city attorney. And during that meeting, it was brought up that the bid that I submitted, which I had no idea how to go about submitting a bid. And I started in the zoning department, trying to reach out and get some help, and wasn't very successful. So I ended up in Ms. Roberts' office, and she was very helpful. And I'm thankful for that. She was very helpful. So went through that, and she calmed me down. I was a little bit agitated, and she helped me out and gave me some pointers and stuff. So I went to this place called Act Scout Data, I think is what it is. And when you go there, you look at property, there's no appraisal there. There's no amounts or anything there, so you're just kind of flying in the dark. So what I did, I did some research, and I reached out to some classmates to try to figure out, like, what is the property value? What is the property worth? And I did some cross-referencing. I looked at, there was a property that's out there that owned by people who have no interest in ever coming to Pine Bluff. Like, my family owns some property, some lots, close, it's off of Grant and Barracute, on the Prince of Pipe area, I don't know if you're familiar with that area. I think it's Mr. Phelps and Mr. May's area. So my grandparents, the Kidd family, owns a couple of plots down there, two plots. And next to them is a family in Florida, they own three plots. They paid $1,000 for those three parcels. $1,000 in 2015 for those. Just want to throw that out there. They paid $1,000 in 2015 for those three parcels. The one that I was interested in is right there on the corner. It's abandoned lot. The city took it over in 2000. Nothing has been done with that lot, nothing. It's overgrowth, nothing's been done with it, no taxes, anything, nothing's been done with it. So I wasn't aware of how to bid or anything. So I put in a bid for $500. Moving along, so the planning committee did meet for a while. They finally got together, couldn't get a quorum, finally got together, met, I want to say September, October. Paperwork was lost, some other stuff happened. So finally got together October, maybe the 6th, I think. And they voted to recommend approval. Fast forward, they voted to recommend approval. So then it was a meeting, I think, with the city council last week or something like that. And the city attorney decided to put all the bids on hold. So my first, my first comment is, what regulation or what guideline allows the city attorney in writing to put bids on hold? Okay, that's what I would like to know. If the amount was not sufficient, if I remember correctly, Ms. Roberts gave me documentation that says prior to the planning committee, the planning committee meeting, research is done in that there's a counter offer. That was never done. There was no counter, so. Okay, I would have understood if there was a counter. That never happened. So the meeting took place, the vote to recommend approval. So today, I was approached and said that the lot is worth $3,000. Okay, where did you come up with that figure? I was told there was an assessment or something like that. So at this point, I would like to know, where did that assessment come from? How is it today that a lot is worth $3,000, but a lot was sold to someone else, three lots were sold to someone else, $4,000? But if you've been doing this 15 years or 39 years, how did you sell three lots for $1,000 to a resident, just a non-resident who's never going to come here, never going to put, invest in the city, which I plan to invest in my city? I want to be here. I'm going to go shop. I'm going to take pride in this place. I was raised here. Dr. Flower delivered me. I'm proud of this place. I want to call this place home. But you are selling property to others that have no intent to live here? There was a, I think it was Resolution Number Six, that someone in Iowa wanted to buy a property that bid $2,000. Come to find out, five parcels was worth $2,000 apiece. So I'm glad that the city attorney looked at that. Because that person never intends to come to Pine Bluff, is not going to contribute to our economy, is not going to do anything for us. So at this point, if the city needs $3,000, you know what? I'm willing to pay that, but I need to know why. Why, after this time, are you saying, I need to pay you $3,000 for that lot?
Mrs. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure there are a lot of questions. I just, just so I'm clear with what you just shared with us. And first of all, thank you for coming to speak to us. And again, thank you for your patience. And thank you for being willing to move home and invest. We want you to invest, and we want to help you. Just to, the one thing that I know, and I think I remember the meeting that you're talking about, maybe the last meeting.
It was the last city council meeting.
Yeah, so only the sponsor of the legislation can pull it down. Now, my sense, if I recall correctly, is that the sponsor might have pulled it down because there were questions about the value and questions about what many of us already know is, from my understanding, guided by ordinance in that land that the city sells has to be sold at appraised or assessed, at the appraised or the assessed rate. Now, that's my understanding.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify those two things. My question would be, when you described the folks from Iowa who bought the three parcels for $1,000?
No, they live in Florida.
Or Florida?
Yes, ma'am, because I reached out to them because I wanted to buy that land from them because it's adjacent to my grandparents' land. But, and I don't want to, like, start pointing fingers, but the people in zoning told me there wasn't a road there, but there actually is a road there. So they told me I couldn't use my grandparents' land, but that's a whole different story, and I don't want to start, you know, like, pointing out stuff. So I decided not to.
Well, that's an important thing to note. Sometimes people don't know, sometimes people make mistakes.
Okay, let's just say it was a mistake.
So we need to know that so that we can correct and clarify. So we can all be on the same page.
That was a mistake made by the zoning people who thought there was not a road. They didn't know that grant existed. So I was told that my grandparents' parcels was uninhabitable. So what I wanted to do was to build on their parcels and then buy the other three from the Robinsons, who lived in Florida, since they only paid $1,000 for their three. I figured, so I reached out to them to buy theirs because you can get all that information from the Act Scout Data. Yes, ma'am. So I reached out to them to ask them if they ever was going to come to Arkansas. And basically, they said no, they wouldn't. They bought the land because they thought there may be, there would be some development in the future, and they was going to cash in on the land. Basically, while they bought it, they have no ties to Arkansas, Pine Bluff whatsoever.
Mayor.
Councilmember Phelps.
May we yield to the city attorney? I believe she has the details on this situation.
Madam City Attorney.
So what I shared with Ms. Martin was that generally what we do is we use the county's assessed value to determine what, how much property is, can be purchased for by a citizen from the city, okay? In Ms. Martin's case, her property on Act Data did not have an assessed value, okay? So apparently, I think this is generated or obtained by the zoning inspection and zoning, they received a property summary from the county since there was no assessed value. And that county valuation for her property was $1,500 per lot. Ms. Martin bid $500. When I advised Councilmember Phelps, who introduced the legislation, I advised him that that is not the protocol that the city generally follows because the city must be fair to anybody who wants to purchase property. So we can't justify allowing someone to purchase the property below the assessed value unless they've had it appraised on their own. We don't want to discriminate against other people who want to purchase property. Therefore, we use the county's assessed value. So I advised her then that I, well, I told her that I advised that the legislation be pulled and it be reevaluated.
Councilmember Lockett.
Yes, Ms. Martin, and that's been always my, I used to chair planning development just like Mr. Phelps, and we had the same problem. And my proposition to the mayor was that if we, if we entertained or if we approve your $500 a lot assessment, then it would set the bar that all property from the city of this nature would be at 500. And I told her, I didn't have no problem as long as we knew what we were doing, that if we accepted this one sale, then it set the bar for all city lots to be 500. And they would use this as a precedent. And I said, if that's legal and fair and it passed muster, I don't have a problem with it. But if anybody sues us for giving away the city's resources, then we are in some kind of conundrum. So that's how we came with that we had to evaluate. And that's been always the city attorney's opinion, that we could dispose of city property as long as we did it at fair market value and it made sense based on some kind of comps from somebody. Therefore, when somebody would come to the city and say, now, why did you sell that land for that amount? And they said, see these comps here? We got this one, this one, this one, and this one sold for this, and they are all in comparable rates, and it makes sense. And that's where we are at the city. Now, I'd like, you know, if we could get a land bank. And in some states, they have land banks where they can give you the property if you sign a contract saying that you would put a development worth this much money that would give the city so much taxes that we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, people could get city land for free. Because if you put the city of Pine Bluff in Act Data Scout, you come up with 20 pages of property, which we don't need 80% of it. So, but, we don't have a way, because in many cases, people have donated the land, and we've accepted it. We don't have an equitable way other than using this process of comps to dispose of the property.
But, okay, so then I understand that. And I don't have a problem if you say the land is valued at that. But I guess my problem is, how does someone 10 years ago buy the property from the state at $1,000 and buy three parcels at $1,000? But today, you want to charge me different? That's only, that's my only issue.
Can I say, and I did look, I looked at all the parcels surrounding your property, and I think I shared that with you when we went back here.
It's about five parcels down, so that's my only issue.
Well, what I'm saying is the property that is touching your property, that's adjacent and across the street, is valued at $3,000, which is what the valuation is for the property you're trying to purchase.
I just said, Councilmember Brown.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you go ahead.
Well, I, so the question I was trying to ask is, the people who bought the property, the three parcels at $1,000, who did they buy the property from?
From the city.
Okay, okay, that's what I just wanted to be clear about.
What do you call it, quick limited deed or?
Quick deed.
Right, they bought it, right, they bought it from the city.
That's just what I wanted to be clear about, yeah. She said 10 years ago.
Yeah, it was 10 years ago, so maybe it was a different standard, so.
I don't, I don't.
I think value.
The value may have changed.
Maybe the value went up, and it could be. And if that's the answer, that's the answer, and I'm okay with that.
I believe we've been following that same principle since I've been on the council.
I mean, I'm okay with it, if that's the answer.
I had other, one other quick question of Madam City Attorney. You mentioned that there was no assessed value. And how does that work where there is no assessed value of a property? And what is a property summary versus an assessment?
What is a property what?
Summary.
Some property summary. You said that there wasn't an assessed value, so instead, the assessor did a property summary.
Now, and I don't know that I have a full answer to your question because I think the property summary was obtained by inspection and zoning. I think they're the ones who provided that. So that's what has been, what was used in the development and planning meeting to, as the valuation for the property. Now, but I can't swear to that, that's what I understand.
So we did the, we did the property summary, not the county?
I think they got it from the county because there was no number. And that's what I understand.
And typically, what they do is find lots or structures or whatever it is, similar in the area to what you're trying to get. So they took those pieces of land that were around you and then probably created that value from that.
Okay, but why, why was it a counter before that planning committee, is what I'm asking?
Why was it?
The proper thing to do was to have a counter, right?
Yes, ma'am, and I believe that's why the city attorney.
You can't, you can't counter from that position that you were in. So you were at 500. The only counter we could offer would be 3,000 because that's the valuation. That's the only counter we could offer you.
But did they pay that for?
I'm sorry?
Did they pay 3,000 for it?
I don't know who paid for what.
No, 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 what they do, a lot of people from out of town, out of state, buy property here, and they jack the price up thinking they're going to make a whole lot of money on it.
No, she paid, she's saying they paid $1,000 for the three lots.
And they was going to sell it to me for 2,000. And I was going to pay 2,000 for it.
That's what I'm saying, but a lot of people do that, and they try to make money on it. And they really, they really don't want the property, can't do nothing with it.
That was the whole purpose of buying it.
To make money on it.
Well, the only reason why I didn't buy that property is it costs more to clear the property. That's the only reason, because it's just completely woodland.
That you wanted to pay for.
Right, and that's the only reason why I didn't buy that property.
I understand what they be doing in Pine Bluff, this is what they do. And they should have come, they're not going to come here, they're not going to come here.
Everywhere, and we can speak offline, just, I think we all. Councilmember Phelps.
Yeah, I did want to just provide some clarification. I'm not familiar with these other lots that were sold. I haven't seen any documentation about that. I would be a little bit cautious, at least on my end, because it could be in a different area, it could be surrounded by a different. I think I wouldn't base this assessment based off of that one.
It's three lots.
But I, but I will say that on September the 25th, this came before development and planning, along with several other bid requests. They were below market value. I think our committee, because we want to build up Pine Bluff, we wanted to show flexibility to people who showed a willingness to come to the city to allow them to purchase property below market value. But once we did put it on the agenda, we forwarded to the city council as the procedure says we're supposed to do. The city attorney reviewed it as she's supposed to do. And she said that for the sake of precedent, because as Mr. Lockett had said, for decades and decades and decades, we've only been selling at market value. She said, let's put a hold on that. We have had some conversations with Ms. Martin, and right now, we're at a point where, like she was saying, we have to offer a counter. That would be the $3,000, and we can come back before the next city. We could put that on the agenda for the next city council meeting.
And if we, if I could get with you and Ms. Martin afterward, I would be interested in seeing, to your point, the property summary and how that was compiled. The second thing I would say is that we have actually been working on, and this is something we talked with Councilmember Lockett about months ago, but we're actually working on creating a land bank, which may be beneficial to what we're trying to do in the way that Councilman Lockett just mentioned. So if we could visit afterward?
Well, I'll just say two things. I did receive the information on the land bank. For me at least, I believe that's a long-term project that won't necessarily help Ms. Martin in the short term. I think you're just at a point where you're just trying I think you're just at a point where you're just trying to go ahead and get this property acquired.
Yeah, because I'm basically homeless.
And so, yeah, and so, we've basically, we have reviewed all the options with the city attorney and how this estimate was put together, and so basically, the only option moving forward is coming back at the next city council meeting with that $3,000 counter offer.
I, I think the first, the last thing I would like to say is that I understand there's processes and there's procedures, and I understand that there's meetings, but there has to be a way to navigate through certain processes. And I work for the state of Tennessee, which is why I raised my hand, I work for the state of Tennessee Treasury Department, so I'm familiar with a lot of banking and management things and moving processes alone. So to find, and I understand you have to have a quorum, and you have to have the people, the right people in place, but I started this June the 27th, and we're into November. It has to be a way to navigate or to hold special meetings so that, not just for me, but for people that are affected by things like this. Because it's not very good.
Business.
Business processes, and it's not very good customer service, and you can't build communities like this. It's, you can't build communities like this, you can't.
Yes ma'am, you said what?
And I'm just one person, but you just can't.
When did you start your process?
June 27.
June 27.
You just can't build, and I, you can't build communities.
Well, that, that, that is exactly what disturbs me, and, and that is why I would like to just visit offline, because I do understand that a lot of time is passed and you're trying to move forward. I, I just am, I just would like to see how the property summary was arrived at and under what circumstances. There's no assessment, and all land.
I talked to the assessor, and she didn't give me that, ma'am. I talked with Ms. Tillman, she's a classmate of mine, and she did not give me 3,000, but like I said.
Did she give you something?
She did, she didn't give me that. I'll pay it though.
Well, but, let's visit offline.
Madam Mayor.
And I just have a question, is, and the $3,000 is for two properties, right? 15?
1,500 per lot.
Hundred apiece? Is that, is it? No, I'm saying, I'm just asking a question.
3,000 apiece?
It's 1,500 apiece.
Oh, okay, so 4,500.
No, no, I'm saying it's $3,000.
Oh, it's, oh, it's just two? I don't know why I think it was three.
She mentioned three other properties.
She mentioned the other three properties.
So she's interested in two parcels that, for 1,500?
All together, yeah, 3,000.
Versus the 500 apiece.
I did just want to mention.
Councilmember Phelps?
I did just want to mention, in terms of the process, I do understand the frustration, but, you know, our committee, we do meet, you know, monthly, and that's pretty much a typical schedule, and so we've been moving as fast as we can, but anytime you're acquiring land, you know, sometimes it is going to be a process, when several departments have to acquire assessments, there has to be legal reviews, things have to come before the city council. So I do just want to put that defense for our committee out, is that we have been.
Yeah, I wasn't speaking against the committee.
No, I'm not talking, I'm just saying, just for Ms. Martin and the citizens watching, we've been moving as expeditiously as possible, but we also have to be, you know, diligent so that we don't run into issues.
Absolutely. And I, just to be clear about what I meant, it is, these, sometimes these processes do take awhile, and the only thing I take issue with is the fact that she went through the process, you, you know, worked with her through that process, and she went all the way through the committee process and the planning commission, and then got here, and what happened, happened, and then she's continued to have conversations. And all of that, coupled with the fact that there was no assessed value, and then there was a property summary, I just would be interested in knowing how that works, while we are, you know, ourselves, working on establishing a purchasing division, as well as building out or establishing a land bank for the city. I think those two things will alleviate a lot of the frustration and what you have unfortunately experienced, Ms. Martin. But in the meantime, I'm, I just, I'm interested in that, and I'm sure other council members might be interested in that too. Councilmember Lockett.
Yes ma'am, one, you know, Bro Phelps is just new to this committee, but Bro Phelps, I can just give you one piece of advice, never entertain land bids without the city attorney in the room. That will cut out a lot of your headaches, because a lot of times, we as politicians thinks we can do things that we just can't do. So that's what I just, make sure that anytime this process where they're bidding on parcels, that you always have the city attorney in the room, so they can be abreast as things happen. What happened on this time, it went all the way through this committee process, then it got on the council's agenda, and I put, I talked to the city attorney prior to the meeting, and I said, Madam City Attorney, has your staff looked at this? Because if I'm, if you cool with it, I'm cool with it. But what happened, her staff hadn't looked at it, so then she had to have it, it had to be pulled back, because we don't want to make the tragic mixtate of selling the people's property, and somebody comes to us and say, y'all didn't do that right.
I have a question. How, how, how did it not go through city attorney? Because it has to, it has to be, it has to, they have to write up the resolution or the ordinance for it, right?
They do, but according to law, they are only required to do it according to form. So if they're not invited into the deliberations of the decision made by the council, they don't make it until it's, it's brought to their attention.
But as our city attorney, if you see something that is legally an issue, shouldn't they have the right to notify us, their client?
If they see it, but what I'm saying is, that the city attorney's office is more than just one person, so some things may get by the city attorney.
But I would just like to say, usually the city attorney's office, they don't attend every single committee meeting, and so I think that a learning lesson for us is usually when staff brings things to the city, to committee meetings, it's our assumption that it's already been reviewed by the city attorney's office. And I do think that this is an example of the process working, because when the Development and Planning Committee recommended it to the full council, it wasn't approved, it was still under review by the council and under review by the city attorney. And so at that point, she did her due diligence, and she says that this deserves further consideration. So I don't think this is a breakdown in the process working, this is a part of it, sometimes it's lengthy, it's not pretty, but this is just what we have to do to handle business properly.
May I say something?
Councilmember Mays.
All she come here to do, make it off on their property, all this other stuff, that's what the woman is here for. This has came, became a long process.
She's not here to do that today. She wanted to come and speak on a non-agenda I am issue, and I think now that we are engaged, especially when this is a legislation from one of your colleagues and a member of the council, we're all doing, we're all doing our due diligence, and we will continue to do that now that everyone is apprised to help in every way that we can, and in so doing, not step on the toes of your council member. Yeah. Okay. With that said, thank everyone for your patience and for staying, and we'll see you next time.